And welcome you guys. It's nice to see you. Happy summer, end of summer. And agenda revisions?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the RFP for the track design. It actually should be in action that we'll need to talk about. We have our PL for selecting a firm to do the redesign of the track.
So we'll add that as 5.7?
That would be great.
Into the action agenda. Anybody else? Public comments? Do you want to wait until we do our equity statement or do you want to do it now?
Sure. We'll wait because a couple students might add.
Okay. A motion to approve the minutes of June 6th and August, what is that, 2nd?
I'm with it.
Scott and a second.
I'll second.
Carl, any comments? Kari, do you have anything?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to be in the minute this time?
Do you think there are more students coming?
I think so, yes.
So why don't we do?
Yeah.
More than, more than those two?
Maybe a few more.
Okay, so let's do the board goals first, is that okay? So we'll just wait. It won't take us very long. So, it feels like a very long process. But we now have three goals that were set by the executive committee and the full board. And then we talked last, actually it was in June, about adding a fourth goal around diversity and equity. And I think the first goal was pretty set. The second goal, we can talk about priorities if we want, based on our training on August 2nd. You missed.
Which I had at least the initial. And Matthew said there was a video. And I haven't been able to find it.
A video? Yeah, where, let me check again, Scott, on that.
And then the third goal, the executive committee wants us to do a little focus in on what's the purpose of community engagement and bring ideas back to the full board in September to kind of get a shared purpose from everybody. And then our diversity goal, which Kari had a statement for.
I've got a draft of that.
Yep.
Couple other updates. This is coming from the executive committee last week. We have some handy-dandy summaries of policy governance that have been circulated amongst the executive committee members and that's sort of our foray, you know, first foray into this call, kind of understanding, you know, what that model is about a little bit more. Next time we meet, Bill is going to bring us some information about a second model, maybe in a way. And so, we're going to see, we're going to do a survey of some different governance models and go from there.
That's the executive committee that's going to do that. So, do you see that as kind of off our local plate until?
I don't think there's any action we need to take.
Okay.
If you're curious to learn more, you can certainly view these policy governance summaries and I'd be happy to share information that we get about other models.
We're good with the executive committee.
At some point, we're going to be bringing you something, you know, a recommendation of some sort and some analysis, I believe. With goal two, this is really being driven by the school quality committee. We took the summer off, as many of these committees did. We're going to meet again at the end of September. I think we're going to probably be bringing the full board something to think about. Some, either recommendation or a concept, because we're going to have to move pretty quickly in order to meet this timeline of identifying a goal based on data that we get in the honorary report and from past honorary reports in order to be able to, you know, build those into next year's budget and plan. So, more coming pretty soon on that. As Adrian mentioned, we're being asked to spend a little bit of time at this meeting talking about the purpose of community engagement, board-level community engagement, so the second bullet down, September 2018. That's, that's where we're at basically now. And when we meet at the end of September, we're going to have a, we're going to basically compile all of that input and the executive committee will take it and draft some kind of purpose statement. And then, should I talk about the fourth goal now?
Yeah, and then let's go back.
And then we go back?
Yep.
So, last time we met, Adrian and I had a homework assignment to talk about, fourth goal having to do with diversity inclusion. And after thinking about it, what I would suggest is that we adopt a goal, something like, pretty simple, develop a school diversity policy consistent with our diversity inclusion and equity belief statement. So, everybody remembers the belief statement, you've got an updated version. We haven't actually adopted it, actually we can talk about that a little bit tonight. But the idea is that we could use that statement to compare draft policies. The policy is what's going to be actually guidance for the administration and the rest of the school community to, you know, to put into action. And really, the thinking with a belief statement was something that we could sort of evaluate and if we, if that's our starting point, our foundation, then I would be comfortable looking at some examples of other policies, because I don't think we're experts in diversity policies. I'd really like to have some good, you know, sort of pragmatic but also legal analysis about what works in school. And then, if we have our belief statement, then we can compare it against the, and go from there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And that also gives us a chance to put some tactics below our core board goal, right? At least a few, like, things we would expect the administration to achieve.
Yeah, well, I think that would be-
Whether it's curriculum or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're part of that policy discussion, what are our expectations around that whole topic. So, Bill's on it, he's, he's going to be bringing us some, not just policies and templates, but also some tools that have been developed by other systems to help us work through that process. But I would suggest that we spend a little bit of time looking back at that belief statement and making sure that we're good with it. Not that it can't change, but that basically that's going to be our working document to work from.
So, do you want to do that first and then do the?
Yeah, why don't we do that? I sent out an updated version. Really, the only change was the one that Karen suggested last time. I think it was the first bullet, it talks about all of our students, staff and other stakeholders can make a positive, I think before it says do make, and as is can. But otherwise, it's, it's the same as what you, what we saw last time.
People okay with that? Okay with it? I think it's very comprehensive.
Kari, that was, that didn't make the point.
It didn't. I sent it out over the weekend.
Right.
When I saw the older version. I hadn't actually made the newer version, but I, looking at the minutes, there was that one change.
That's one I shared.
So, I will send it now that I have the, well, you have it if we don't make any changes to-
Yeah.
The one dated August 28th.
Right.
Version 3.
The piece that I handed out to you tonight, and I sent to Kari, is a piece that comes from the two-way retreat on equity that happened in January.
It's a piece of paper?
Yeah, I put it on your table there, Kari. It's from what the BSBA and the BSA has adopted as an equity statement for Vermont. And a lot of the leading research right now in equity talks about three big areas to look at. And it looks like it's understanding what you define as equity, which we're working on as a board, making a commitment to high-quality teaching and learning, and then leading with a vision to eliminate inequities on, across any grouping of humans that you'd like to, how you'd like to do it. And it's really about doing that positive school climate and engagement environment and safety. Are the three sub-areas under that?
And then the first bullet does a really good job of laying out all the different considerations.
Yeah, that took us a little while. When that group floor was part of that, I was part of that. They were about 50 or 60, 50 years from around Vermont, not just in the pre-K-12, but also from higher ed and other interested parties, business roundtable and others that wrap this together. So, I want to give you that as a point of information. And then, there are quite a few references and resources that through my doctoral work, I've been, I've probably had three classes now on social-cultural issues and all of them around equities and inequities and how you work on that in the school system and in culture. And it's been a great deal of good learning, but I was not even bringing all those resources up now that I have access to them. And there's been many things that many other states outside of Vermont have done for auditing equities, equity practices within schools and school districts and actual sample policies as well. So, it's not a recreating the wheel. So, I think it's really great that the board's thinking about, what, how do you define it? And how do we define it here and then use that as a metric to judge what's been accomplished.
Did the BSBA adopt this?
Yes.
And the BSA?
Yes, we did, in many ways, I guess I should know, but we don't have a actually call. And the SBA supposedly, and I haven't been able to get anything from them yet, developing sample policies based on this statement.
So, I think we have a couple options. We could look at some of the concepts in here and see if we want to incorporate them into our beliefs, either tonight or in a month, say. Or we could, we could say we're good with the belief statement and keep, keep this in mind for the, at the policy level. Either way, I don't feel strongly. I kind of like a little more time to kind of sit with this.
Yeah, I don't think we want to try and meld them tonight. But I think we could look at them again in September. Look at them both and see if there are things we want to add. Does that work for people?
So, that would be, if we develop, if we adopt a fourth goal along this lines, the first step will be, you know, finalizing these belief statements.
Yep. Yeah, just something about a little calendar.
Oh, and I guess the thing I left out in the discussion, it's, it seems like we are the group to take the lead on this. If you were wondering if the policy committee of the SU would, would take the lead, it sounds like they would prefer us to be the driving force on this and bring a recommendation to the issue. Yeah, I think so.
So, it'll be our goal first, kind of?
And then we'll, we'll see what happens and we'll bring-
Where it goes from there.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys good with that?
Sure.
Communication goal. It says, where is it here? "By November 2018, the Washington Central Boards will define a purpose and strategy for board-level community engagement and identify training needs." So, we're looking for the purpose of community engagement. Why do we think it's important to engage the community? What are we looking for when we engage the community? Do we want their opinion? Do we want their guidance? What are people, you know, what does community engagement mean to you?
It's a big picture.
Or, yeah.
There's some interesting stuff up there that, I mean, I don't think there are any fixed answers to the questions that you're asking, which are all very good. But there are, I think, other people who are thinking about them and sometimes in other contexts, such as in, you know, city planners and things like that. But the, the basic problems are pretty much always the same, you know, how to involve the community, how to involve people in the whole exercise of self-government in a way that honors, you know, their time and their energy and their effort to actually show up and be here, but that does not ask them, ask people to do things that are not within the realm of their competence, which, you know, just leads to problems, misunderstandings and breakdowns in relationships instead of reinforcing relationships. So, I think it's a very interesting discussion to have, but I think it also maybe would benefit from having some background to it. I don't know, Bill, do you, in the, in the course of your sort of voracious reading, do you?
I read a lot about this.
Yeah, I figured.
Do you?
Yes.
So, I think it's, for me right now, for the board and that bullet, it's not the how, it's the why.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? You never get people to engage when it's about the what or the how. That's usually when you get the most attention. And the way you leave that attention is like, why are you doing it? And can people agree on why we're doing it? So, if you know the why, and we talked about this as the executive committee last week, that if we can get from the boards the why we're doing it, we can figure out the how and the what pretty easily. So, we're trying to answer the hard question first.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if the Calis Board, you were there for some of this, Scott, it was trying to get people off of thinking about how do you do it? Everyone want to talk about how to do it.
Sure, yeah.
And it's not about, we can, we can go talk, I mean, we can find plenty of places for examples where it's done well and different ways to do it and, you know, go to the different definitions, but why do you want to do it? You know, it's the why. The why can go from is, we want public support to support the schools to why, because we want greater, we want more distributed decision-making, not just making things up. And that's not necessarily a challenge, but it's just, but you as a board, I think the five of you and seven of you need to talk about that. And that's what we're talking about, the executive committee. It'd be great to start to think about why we're doing it, then we can go figure out the hows from either public access or PDQ'd or the other organizations. There's only a few in the world that actually do this work to say what are the best practices to help that why? Because as I've done for my lit review, the how really is determined on why you're doing it. And if the how is to sell a budget, it's much different than you want people in on the decision-making of the direction of where the organization's going. So, you use different hows for different reasons.
Yeah. So, we'll talk about the why?
That's, that's what we're being asked to do right now.
So, right now, why? Why do we want community engagement? Why does the U-32 Board need or?
So, one thing I'm not clear on is, when we say engagement, do we mean two-way flow of information or we talk, does it also include, here's a bunch of information, like our front porch forum posts? Is that what we mean by engagement? Is that, is that included? Or is it when, when we're saying, here's a bunch of information, tell us what you think?
So, is it a conversation?
Right, dialogue.
As opposed to just putting stuff out there?
And I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but-
I think that's a piece of it. I think it's also having community members show up to help run a track meeting. You know, that's a, that's a type of community engagement as well. We certainly saw, coming out of the Act 46 process, we certainly saw a lot of, particularly at the elementary school level, a lot of passion from the communities about the role that their play, their schools play in their community. And the critical piece of that is, and improving communication, improving community engagement at that level is sort of a, you know, to put on a play, a dotty, is very different than getting out a budget message, you know, come, come vote time. But they all fall under, all that, you know, that whole spectrum falls under community engagement. And I, I get the impression that not only us, but our larger community feels like better community engagement will build a better school and a better community and a better educational experience.
If, if I were just to sort of toss out one possible answer to the question, why? It would be to make people's lives better, including, I guess, not just including, but first and foremost, our students' educational experience and life experience, but also, you know, to the extent that that kind of ripples out to include families and, and other members, other townspeople, you know, try to, try to understand. I'm thinking, you know, of our start time committee survey. There's so much in those comments about where people are, are struggling and what they're having trouble with. And this is, this is sort of what I had in mind very vaguely, Bill, at the Calis meeting when we were talking about this. It's just the idea, is there anything we can do to just, even the smallest little thing that might make that better for people? So, it's kind of, part of it, part of the why would just be to understand. And that's why, you know, when students come here and talk about their experience at school and what they're struggling with and/or struggling against, and the kinds of things that might actually help make their lives better and the lives of other students better. This is, I think, a great example of, you know, at least a part of that why. Could be more, could be one more.
For me, the part of the why comes from wanting or needing people to be educated in the community about why we make the decisions we make. Because we can sit around this board table and we can have read hundreds of pages and seen videos and participated in workshops and feel like we're making a very good decision and not have the community support. So, I think the why for us is we need to feel like the community supports our decisions because they're elected officials. At the same time, we feel frustration when we feel like they just don't know. They just don't understand. They haven't read what we've read. They don't know what we know. So, to me, it's little bites of education for the community so that we can, that we can disseminate. So, it's not a two-way street, but like a, two-thirds us, one-third them, something like that, so that, because before we make the decision, they have, at least it's been put out there, the information, in whatever vehicle, I don't care, but so that there's a chance for educating people on, on the why behind some of our decisions. Because that's what happens. Decision is made and people feel disenfranchised and they feel like they didn't have a voice. That's where we want community engagement, is for people in the community who aren't at these tables to feel like they had input.
I agree. I think our job is to, why we want community engagement is to educate the public. But I also think that the public needs to educate us about things that we may not be aware of or that we don't have a broad spectrum of information about. And it's absolutely a two-way street. And I think part of it is educating people that we might get a whole lot of information and then make a decision that not everybody agrees with. And why did we make that decision? Why do we feel we had to make that decision even though there were different points of view on that? But getting information from the public as well as pushing it out to them.
I agree with that. I think about this a lot in my work at the COOP, because we've got a community of 9,000 owners and it's a democratic organization, so it's, it's easy to get pushback from different areas in terms of decisions we make. So, we often will choose topics to, you know, to bring to the owners to have discussions about and try to get buy-in by having people included, at least they have the opportunity to, to participate before the decision is made. Sometimes it works, sometimes not. But I think it's really important to go into those kinds of decision-making processes with a real belief that the information that you get from the outside will, will lead to a better solution in the end, a better decision. If you're insincere about that, if you're just going through the motions and saying, "Give us input," and then set it aside, people sniff that out and it's, makes it worse. So, but, if you believe that we've got these thousands of people in the community with, you know, this variety, rich perspective, and we can learn from it and, and it will help us in our, in making the final decision, it's, it can be pretty powerful.
One thing I would ask you to think about, and there is no right answer. Okay, so, and that's at least one thing I've done, probably reading it then. You need to think about, and Carl, you were going down this road and we had this discussion at Calis too. What's the difference between, or is there a difference between school engagement and community engagement? And I would tell you this, from what I tell my colleagues in Vermont, and now that I'm in New Hampshire a lot, at least once every month, and I tell my folks over there, superintendents and members that we have for the Science District, they're like, "You have tremendous community engagement. Go to a school play, go to an athletic event, come when Parents Night is." The number of parents that come to this high school compared to most high schools, a percentage, is really high for a parent.
September 6th.
Yeah.
By the way.
It's just those, you know, and it's good, I think it's really good that we have a higher, you know, we have a, we have a rigor standard for Vermont, we want more. That's awesome. We want to keep doing that stuff. And we want better engagement. So, I'm not saying to stop, but just trying to be, just kind of create gloves of what I hear from other superintendents in the state and outside. That's very interesting.
Do you have enough, do you think?
So?
You can take what Bill said and change it, have it be, one of the whys is to maintain and increase community involvement in our schools. Basically, parents coming, involvement, attendance, support.
And why is that a good thing?
I said the why. Why do we want community engagement? Because of that.
I'll get it on. The research is extremely clear about family engagement at school. It does not matter, the demographic of the student, proven across all demographics, that the more the family is involved, the higher outcomes the child has.
Yeah. And-
There's no, there's no question.
There's no question. Now, it's been proven, you, I can take your right to Johns Hopkins or the Southeast Lab and the research is very, very clear.
Right. And if, that just sort of triggered a thought that, an advantage of community engagement, if you consider it as non-school family or non-school connected, um, community member engagement, is that they'll vote for our budget, which I consider to be a good one.
And then, Scott knows, because, you know, I talked about this where I'm probably don't have my research, there hasn't been any research on that, on non-family involvement in schools. There's not a, I searched and searched, I've been searching for a year, there's not a research base on how that affects student retention.
Interesting.
It is interesting. Okay?
That's great, thank you. We're going to formally adopt these goals.
Yeah, I was going to say, why don't we do it right now, while you're here? So, a motion to approve the board goals, there would be four of them. The three that we've talked about and then the fourth one being the diversity goal. Is there a motion to that? Scott and a second?
I'll second.
Carl, any more discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? That motion carries. I have a quick question. Do we need a retreat or are we good? What I will do, it's going to be a little bit trickier because some of these goals are so mixed in with the full board, but try and-
But try and put a calendar together and actually, the three of them are pretty complete, but write a complete fourth goal with some bullets.
Great.
I can do that. And then try to put a calendar together.
Yeah, so when I read like the goal one, each individual board has to work on basically self-evaluation on how they operate. So how are we going to do that?
Well, that's what.
That's a good question.
I'm wondering about the how. When I read this, I'm like, yes, and then like, how?
I don't think we really talked about that last time.
I don't think there's been enough of that. For me, you see the clue at the bottom of that, Karen? It says executive committee is starting that. I I don't think it'll be exclusive, but they're taking on some of their own learning about different governance.
Okay, and so our member of the executive committee would then come back and say, here's how I think we are going to evaluate ourselves.
I'll bring that up.
Okay.
Seems like we need to do some self-reflection analysis. It's been a couple of years since we did a self-evaluation.
Yes, yeah, it has been a couple of years.
Yeah, we, on my ABMA board.
We should probably.
There's resources, board source and all that.
We did one.
Yeah.
But we should probably all do the same tool.
Yep.
But if we also do to analyze how we do things, our processes and what about that is effective or ineffective?
So that, I'll bring that up.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Because maybe all the boards will do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, last time we used the V S B A tool.
Yeah, yep. And I think that might even be in the handbook, right?
It is.
Isn't that where we got it from?
Yeah.
And it's kind of the same, you know, goal two, goal two is being driven by the school quality committee. And you try and kind of follow. Great, okay, I have some homework to do. I can do that. Next on the agenda is the diversity, inclusion and equity belief statement, which we sort of just touched on. But do you guys want to say something about that? Is that why you're here?
Yeah, we wanted the flag to go back up on the first day of school.
Okay. And.
Tell us a little more about that.
Yeah. To stay up, to come back down?
To go up and then stay up because we don't really see why there would be a reason to take it down.
And also, we've put all this effort in, like talking to you guys and you guys have done a lot of work as well. And we've talked to the faculty about wanting to raise the flag. And then we finally got it up and now it's down for the summer. And I feel like all the effort that we put into it would just be a waste if we just kept it down. And I feel like it wouldn't be, I guess, it wouldn't be like a true statement for our school. Like our school in the beginning said, yes, we do support you raising the flag. And then like not putting it up would be like, we support you, but like, we're going to keep it down, you know? It would, it wouldn't be a true statement.
Would it be true, and I'm just wondering, if it's still like, spends a couple of days up and then also then moves into the atrium where people can see it all the time, all day, or is that different?
I guess I need to be able to. Like, I, like, I don't have anything to talk about.
That's okay. You don't need that. Just something to think about.
Yeah.
I just want, like, why though?
Yeah, why wouldn't we raise it?
So one of the things that, that I know that I've, I've been talking with the other superintendents that have had schools that have passed this. And one of the things that we were, we're all in support of what it means and symbolism has. It's how, one of the pieces of work we didn't do ahead of time was think about the next time someone comes to have the flag raised. And how does the board put together a policy? And this might sound like a lot of bureaucratic, but it's really for the board to think about, how do we make those, how do they make those judgments? And one of the words that I've talked to Adrian, the chair, about, since she and I work a lot together on that is on agendas is saying, we need to have a conversation about how we make those judgments. Because there will be another approach from another group. And I don't know why. Yeah.
It was.
And so the board has to have a way to think about those things. It's not a question of whether they agree, and I know they agree wholeheartedly. I've talked to everyone individually and I've heard it from them in a meeting, that they support what the flag stands for. It's it's how do we make those judgments in a, in a, in a good way and transparent way?
And we talked about coming up with some kind of policy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, we, we, we didn't have a policy. We didn't really have a context for making the decision to raise the flag other than we strongly felt that we wanted to support you in in what you were asking us. I think we were really moved in that particular moment, say, we we want to support this. But I feel like in some ways we did that, we made that powerful statement. And now, now we need to make that decision again. And I, I think I prefer to make that decision having thought through more of the policy implications. That's where I'm, where I'm at right now.
Can I say something? As from like a teacher's perspective, in addition to being part of this group. One, I want to say like, by the time we had it raised, it's been raised for a very short amount of time. So I think that that is actually one thing that feels bad about it being not kept up for longer. But I do want to say like, as a teacher, as we like started these conversations, like it did make a strong statement and we started huge conversations and conversations were happening and we had plans to move forward. And I feel like the flag being up would say, we're still having these conversations and like make that part of the school. And like, and the kids were showing up. I mean, I think it was really powerful. It was, there were difficult conversations that were really important. And I feel like that would like set the stage for like, this is where we are. I understand the flag idea of like other groups asking being difficult, but, um, I don't know, I find those flags to be different for multiple reasons. One, like this is a statement that like many of the Vermont high schools are making because of the lack of diversity in Vermont. Whereas other flags aren't being flown at other schools that I know of. And and it's not bad for other groups of students to show up to the school board and and do what you're talking about as far as community engagement is and come and say how they feel about things, whether or not they get approved. But it just feels to me like there would be a statement without it up.
May I ask, where's the Black Lives Matter flag now?
Stephen's office.
Stephen's office.
Yeah.
Is there any thought as to where it would go otherwise if it's not in the flagpole? You mentioned the atrium.
We, we've been trying to determine what would be best, whether it's a space in the atrium or another flagpole that could be up outside, looking into options. We really do believe it should be up at least the first few days because that statement is really important. It's, it's being protected right now. It's not a statement to say that we don't support it. We just wanted to take care of it over the summer and people weren't here all the time. So it's, it's more about where can we express support of this group and other groups too that may come forward? Maybe not all of them, but the ones that make sense to support the student voice. So yeah, I think it should be up the first two days of school for sure. And then we were hoping that we could figure out where to fly it. And part of my concern about it is I know you see it when you get here. But when do you see it the rest of the day unless you're in a classroom on this side? And I feel like those discussions need to keep happening and maybe it needs to be, that's why I put forth that idea of the atrium. Maybe it needs to be in a space where people are all the time congregating and talking. And it will help improve the dialogue and bring it even more to the forefront. But maybe that's not true. That's something I wonder about.
Oh, what, I have, I have two things. One is, uh, how come we did take it down over the summer? Because Montpelier, they had theirs up like during the summer, so I just wanted to.
I don't have the answer to that specifically. I know that we.
I can give that to you.
Okay, perfect.
So, um, I don't know if you've heard, it's happened at People's Academy this past summer, but they've had ban of. Montpelier, there's a lot more people by the Montpelier High School. Stephen and I talked, we made a decision that we could protect it all the time. And we were taking it down late at night and putting it back up early in the morning for that same reason. And we didn't want, it was a, that's, I'm giving, that's a straight reason we did it. It wasn't not wanting to have it up, we wanted to protect the flag.
And then the second thing is, is that, um, you said like we're worried about, um, people hurting, harming it and taking it down or whatever. But if we put it in the atrium, I know a lot of kids that will try to jump up even like for the other flag.
Yeah, it's not going to be with the other flag. It's going to be somewhere else, more prominent.
Right.
Like in the center, hanging on the ceiling.
And not accessible.
And not accessible.
Even the good, even the good jumpers.
Equipment to do that. But maybe that's not the answer.
I just have a couple of things. I think having the flag up front can make the school appear more, um, strong and more welcoming. Especially like if you're a new kid and you're coming in and you're coming to a super, super weight area and you see that, that can be a comfort to a person. Um, also, I think this is missing a couple of things, like, um, you know, all students benefit from diverse and inclusive school, um, classrooms. They should strive to be welcoming and supportive of all students, families and school staff. I think that's kind of.
Which, which one are you referring to?
The definition of equity.
Yes, that came from, that's not the board's piece, that's a piece from V S A, the Vermont School Board Association of Vermont.
Okay, I think they're missing a few things like, um.
With the board, with the board resolve.
I think it's missing a few things like, um, well, you put race, but not racial background, um, abilities, special needs, cultural identity. You put family economics, but it's actually socio-economic status, um, home language instead of language, country of.
I'm going to say, just, just like.
We don't have any power over this.
Yeah, I, I just think it's missing a few things.
It's been written and adopted by the V S B A. The one that Jody just handed you is the one that we can change and add to.
Yeah.
This was just kind of for our information about what's going on in this state.
And one of the things that I, I mean, I changed to give the board, but what's coming out of the national prominent is don't try to list everybody and say the differences. And that there are differences among all of us. And that it's hard because that feels kind of coded and doesn't really explain it. I'm not saying that I'm, I'm totally with that yet. I'm still trying, but I, I think whenever you make a list. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, well, I think, I think it does.
Whether you try or not, it's gonna, something's gonna, something, there's going to be another added to that at some point. You know, we, a couple of years ago, we could have talked about transgender wouldn't be on that list.
Right, or even gender expression, which is.
Gender expression, right, so how do we make something for the board making this statement? And and with love input on this, that recognizes those. So there's that inclusion piece, but doesn't get to where, where did you leave something out? And I, I don't have a solution right now this minute, but.
I think there will always be something left out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, that's.
And so how do you, I was talking with someone who's a real expert at this this summer. Um, and she was saying to me, it's really about accepting differences. And she does this work internationally. And she said the same, we're working on the same issues as the five or six countries she does research in, U S being one, Stanford University. And she said, South Africa, Australia, New Zealand, the Commonwealth countries, we're all doing the same.
So you would rather like not have any of them?
Well, I don't know. I'm saying I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm saying I don't have an answer for you, but when you make a list, Jody said it for me, helped complete my sentence, was you eventually leave someone out.
Yeah.
Because there's, you're making the list, it has to be all-inclusive and then what happens when there's another item? And sometimes you can put a word like differences such as or but not exclusive to, you know, that type of thing. And I, and I would, I would implore anybody in this room and others that aren't right now, but how would you say that?
I think some people don't even know what differences are sometimes, you know?
One of the statements in our statement, all is, where, yeah, all students have the right to an education free of, free of biases, explicit and implicit, historical, contemporary, based on their identity. That's the third bullet down. Which we're hoping includes everybody. It is inclusive, all of our students, um, without trying to list them all. But let's go back to the flag.
Yeah.
So we have a couple of options. It sounds like there's an option to put it in the atrium, there's an option to build a new flagpole, there's an option to put it on the same flagpole as the U S flag. There's an option to raise it at the beginning of school for a couple of days or a week. There's an option to wait and figure out a policy before we do anything.
And all I can give you for information is that Brattleboro, last time I, I haven't talked with, um, I think it's Vicki, their superintendent since last, after they had elected a race, they were going to have a second flagpole, it was going to be a student flagpole. And have a policy to support how they do that.
Did they do the second flagpole before they did the policy?
Nope, maybe they even do the policy, they'd like to put the flag up. And they did, and they were working on a policy and they were.
So they're in the same place we are. Okay, yeah.
And that was as of like the end of June.
Yeah, probably in the same place we are right now.
And did you mention the option of just sticking with our original decision?
Which was.
Leave the flag up.
Just leave the flag up.
Well, um.
You never gave us, you never gave us in your motion in time to take it down.
We didn't, we didn't say anything, we didn't discuss it.
But we did say something about February, didn't we?
Nope.
No.
We didn't.
No, we discussed it, but.
And your motion never, your motion never gave us, that's why we were ever at this, this meeting today.
Yep.
Okay, so that, um, we would not have to make a new formal decision in order to.
Just have the flag up.
In order to just have the flag up. Because that would involve having to warn a vote.
Right, right, which is not worn today.
Yeah. So in a sense, what we could do is provide a kind of advisory opinion? Is that sort of a thing?
For the interim?
Well, um, sort of, you know, say that, um, something like we.
So let me, let me say something, Scott, because I think it's better to be direct than it's, um, and for the students in the audience to be more direct and have it and and not worry about our procedure so much. You run, the board runs under Robert's rules. Robert's rules allows you to adjust the agenda in any way, fashion or form you want. Our practice is as high as I want to go because we don't have a procedure and we don't have a policy on this. Our practice has always been, we try not to add action, to add action items that are already warned. I already asked for an agenda revision to do that tonight. So I would suggest it be, so I'm suggesting to the whole board that you be, if you want to be direct, be direct. If you want to say, leave it the way we left it, which means it's on the flagpole, tell us that. But not to, um, not to get into parliamentary or Robert's rules.
Sure.
Because that's just not clear for the folks in the audience.
That's absolutely fine. What about just sort of, uh, concurring that we trust the administration's judgment on this? Is that.
Our proposal is that it goes up for two days and then moves into the atrium.
Yeah.
That's our proposal.
So would you need us to actually vote on that or just to, um, to give it the latitude?
I think that, I, I think you're having, you're having a discussion right now and I think you took the action. So I would prefer that the board gave us some direction.
And it is important to note that that's not what the students are hoping for, just as we're having the full dialogue.
And has the administration thought seriously about an additional flagpole?
Yes.
And have you ruled that out?
No.
No.
We shouldn't have had time to have the conversation with you about it and put a policy in place on it.
We've had time to explore the cost.
Yeah.
You have had time to explore the cost, which is a reason.
Five to six thousand dollars.
So that budget couldn't absorb that.
Yeah.
Um, what would be the point of raising the flag for two days on the flagpole and flagpole and then taking it off and moving it to the atrium? Because I think, feel like that's confusing for the students to walk into school, first day of school, and see it on the flagpole like it was last year. And then a couple of days later, when they return back to school, be like, oh, wait, where's the flag? Does our school not support it? And then see in the atrium, good, why is. see in the atrium, good, why is in the atrium, why weren't we notified by this? Because so far it's only us that know, students.
Did the administrative house, administration have some specific thinking around that idea?
Um, there are opening assemblies, so I'm, I'm, I'm winging it here and assuming that that's probably what Stephen was thinking, that it would be up and then he would explain what the next step was for that flag.
For all the students.
And then it would move after he'd explain that. But I'm not a hundred percent sure what that, that was, because we have not discussed it.
You know, I feel like, um, putting it up again is another powerful statement and which is different from flying a flag every day. The, the flag of the United States, the flag of the state of Vermont. These are these are symbols of, of our union, right? And they're not gonna change, a hundred years from now, we'll still be flying those two flags. Black Lives Matter, I think is, is, I don't know. We could, we can imagine it evolving and, um, there's, there's something else that is a symbol of inclusion. So I, I feel like they are different things. And maybe that's the thinking behind having a separate flagpole, I'm not sure, but, um, for me, the, the whole point of flying the flag was to make a statement of support. And I think we did that once, we could choose to do that again, but it don't, for me, it's not necessarily a indefinite action.
I kind of feel like, I'm not trying to speak for you guys, but I kind of feel like you guys think that when we put that up and have that big ceremony, it's like everything ended, like it was great, everyone was within it, ended, but it didn't. And that flag, like your support from us, when we put it up there was great, and like, we would love to have that support continuing on with that there, because things haven't changed that much.
In our motion, I think we stated that it was gonna be the beginning of a whole process of understanding diversity. And so, I, I believe we really meant that. That, you know, you talked about initially how Mount Kilian had worked for three years and there was kind of, theirs was kind of a culmination of three years' worth of work. Whereas you guys were just getting organized and just getting going, and it was kind of the beginning of a big, long process. And I strongly believe in that, and I think the administration started down that road, and it's a huge, hard road, and we heard them say that in June, or I can't remember when.
Yeah, in June.
Um, and they've done, I know they've done a huge amount of thinking about what it's going to look like in the future. And how students are gonna participate, and what teachers are gonna do, what the T A is gonna do, what's gonna be different, how they're gonna use the resources they have, what other resources they need. So, I believe, and I think the board believes, that this is the beginning step. And we are not saying, oh, we're done. By any stretch of any, you know, we've got a diversity and equity statement that we're about to pass and a policy we're about to implement that most schools don't have. This is kind of cutting-edge policy development.
Um, I just also wanted to say, um, is the flag being up there isn't just for the school community, it's a great benefit and starting new conversations and amazing things for the school community. But when it's also up outside and on the atrium, people who come to school functions, they're coming to a play, they're coming to the soccer game, they're seeing it too. And it, because somebody who's going to a soccer game isn't necessarily gonna come into the atrium. And if it's in the atrium, they don't get to see that expression from the school. And sometimes saying nothing is just as strong as a statement of saying.
Also to, I don't know, you said like, this is the beginning or something, and that it's not finished. Well, I feel like when you, um, a statement of not putting it up, um, like, there was an offer of not putting it up, because you said you already gave your support and you don't know if you should, um, but that was already a statement. I feel like not putting it up would be saying the opposite statement. And that, like, it'd be like kind of ending it. And not continuing this beginning of, of a new movement.
I have one more question too. If y'all were to put it on like a separate flagpole, where would that be?
Somewhere else.
Like still in good view of people who come?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I mean, we have to follow the flag protocol, uh, set by the American Legion. It's usually a tradition, there's no real stated, so it can't be higher than the American flag. The state flag, but we can figure that one out.
Is the idea that it would be the only flag or multiple flags?
That's a good question, Krista, as I've talked to my fellow
Depends on the policy.
That's where this policy is gonna support this.
I know it sounds, it, it, it's hard for me sometimes to think about policy, and like, why do I wanna go without, because I have a statement of an expression I wanna make. And it's the point of having that policy will help the board think about the other, I mean, as, as Jody reminded me, I had forgotten that we've had other questions to, we've had other petitions to raise other flags. First, that represents students here.
Like recently after?
Yes, yes. So, we have to be able to judge that in a, in a fair and transparent way, as we do have to do other things in school. And the board gives those, determines those policies and then us, that Jody, myself, Stephen, as the administration, we have to figure that, we have to implement those. And right now, it's it's hard to implement that in a way, some people, we've been accused of not being fair for that to other people's requests. And it's not about fairness, it's about fairness, but it's not about, we wanna do it in a thoughtful way. And the best thing the board, the board's really saying this up right by saying, what are the beliefs of the board? Just like we did with the mission about what we do for schooling, and Krista, you, you know this from the student learning outcomes. That blue statement that's above the student outcome is what drives all the student outcomes. That's what this board started and the whole supervisory, and said that's what we believe we want our kids to have. I said yesterday, and Krista, you heard me say yesterday, I use the example of the Black Flag, Lives Matter flying, as a great example of our students have shown they're proficient in affecting their local and global communities. That's what you guys have taught me, that you know how to do that, and you're courageous enough to do it. So, that piece is really, really important and falls right in that mission. And I hope that this board will say, in their policy, it's gotta be related to the mission of what they've said is incorporated in kids.
Where did we write that? Where did we write that? Was that in the, was that in the motion?
That was part of the, that was part of it. I mean, I, for me, I always understood that this was opening a door, like, and you guys, because you guys talked about that a lot, and I was always comfortable with the fact that you entrusted your judgment with the fact that you were gonna have to decide what goes along with our policy.
So does somebody have a suggestion of the next step?
I, I think that it would be great to keep the flag raised. I don't like that.
I, I was looking for a, I was looking, I know, I was looking here. Um, because I have an idea, but I like to.
You know, nothing has changed in terms of our wanting that flag up and that message, I don't think. Um, other than a new school here, you know, it's August, not June. I guess my instinct here would be, we put it up, we wanna keep it up until we've come to an agreement as a community about what we do with it next. And maybe that happens in the next couple of weeks and we move it to the atrium, or maybe it's something different. But certainly as the school year starts, I, I feel like we ought to have it up. Because I, I totally get the piece where we put it up, had a, you know, had a press party, and then we put it away. And it's like, you know, we did it, now we're done, but we're not done, we're looking at hundreds of years of work, you know? And hopefully positive work. But, uh, but I guess I don't see a reason for it to have come down, or for it to then security in summer, I get that, yeah, yeah, to not have to overreact yet, but. And that's a legitimate thing, you know, vandalism, what it is. So my inclination would be, put it back up until we come up with a next step. And that we stay involved in that conversation, you know, we don't let that conversation fall off the agenda.
And when you say we come up with a next step, you mean the board?
Oh, no, the community, the students, administration and the board.
And how, how would we figure that out?
I'm not sure.
Community engagement.
Community engagement, no.
Or would it be a policy? Until, you know, the flag stays up until we have a policy
That directs otherwise.
That directs otherwise or supports what we're doing. And, you know, may, there may be some huge community engagement in, when we're thinking about that policy, to hear where other people are coming from.
Yeah.
Because we certainly heard from another part of the community.
And I wanna, wanna add to that, that I recognize from the administration's perspective, there may be some challenges to that. Um, like security, like, you know, um, and I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want any of us to ignore the realities of those practical challenges. So what I was gonna say in response to what you said, Carl. I implore the board to come up with a policy the, the next two months. And have it done. Because we really need a way to help, it, it is putting a lot of taxing efforts. And we told you about what didn't get done last spring. Good reason, I agree with the priorities, wanted the priorities, but is that we've gotta come back and ask for additional resources.
So how about a motion?
May I just, before the motion?
Sure.
Actually, discuss the motion, then we can discuss after, yeah.
You guys okay with me making the motion, or do you want?
I can, I would move that we put the flag back up. For a period of time, but when? Give ourselves a couple of months to come up with a next step.
How about until a policy is written and passed?
Sure, sure, that works.
Can I just clarify, like, so when you say written and passed, you mean that that would happen in this school board meeting?
Yeah. Yep.
And maybe, I mean, there might be some preliminary work, you know, here within the walls of the school, there, you know?
Yeah, the board, the board writes policy and pass, excuse me, passes it, and there's a procedure for passing it. Usually it takes a couple of meetings, you can't do it in one meeting.
Scott, you had a discussion.
Adrian, do you have a second on that?
I was just gonna say that, Scott, we'll second that, thank you. Go ahead, Scott, yes.
Um, for me, the, the best thing about this whole issue has been that you all have, have actually driven it. And I guess I have a, I have a vague concern that's kind of the flip side of yours, Ginger. Um, when you said if you take down the flag, you know, it kind of grinds to a halt. Um, my hope is that if the flag is up, it's not like, yeah, we won, now, it's all, it's all set. Um, I'm just, I'm curious as to, you know, what your, what your strategy is going, um, into the future to sustain these kinds of, whatever, uh, kinds of action or, um, contacts, encounters, discussions that have been generated by virtue of the flag having been raised. And just what your thoughts are about that?
Um, we're actually going, we're planning on going to visit like elementary schools and talk to them more, because that's where it really starts. And, um, we talked about, that's the thing that we're doing, makes sense though.
Well, also last year, we talked in some of the meetings about bringing in more, um, community members, or just outside people, um, talking about diversity or just, um, workshops, yeah, and, um.
Also, I think also bringing it into our curriculum.
And actually, I received an email from Landau, a teacher at Landau High School, asking to come and observe us and talk to these students and talk, because they're about to embark on this procedure. And so, we talked about the idea of also creating an alliance through the schools and maybe creating a chance for schools to come together and talk about, it, it might have this like kind of unity as well as within the community. But I think to, a lot of like, I mean, the teachers are moving forward with the idea of keeping these conversations going, keeping these callbacks happening, keeping people coming in the building.
A part of what we heard at another meeting was some students feeling disenfranchised by this. Um, and so I think it's important for you guys to know that this has to be inclusive also. And there are people with other opinions or other feelings on this matter, and they need to feel included and respected also.
I appreciate that they have been, we've been, last year.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what we heard, okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, we heard it. And I, I'm not putting any judgment on them, but they were here and they spoke to us and they were pretty clear about how they were feeling also. So, it's just an awareness on everybody's part. That there are different opinions, there are different feelings, and it's gonna take a lot of hard work and conversations and understanding of everybody's point of view.
How do they feel excluded?
I'm not, I'm not gonna get into it.
You can actually go back and watch the board
Yep.
video.
There is a video of it, you can watch it.
Maybe together, not alone. Um, what I wanna say is that we're starting next week with some, the opening days look different, and the theme is belonging. And I would encourage you to think about how you can include that throughout, because that's, that's really what that, part of what that flag means, right? That you belong here. And so how can we use that theme of belonging to support everyone to feel safe and secure in this building? Because it's really about belonging for all of our students. And so that's part of the discussion that the teachers are gonna kick off, your T As are going to kick off with you on Monday or Tuesday and Wednesday. And so continuing with that theme of belonging, how can we continue these conversations? And I think the callback workshops is great, um, working with other schools is great. I think you might have to go back and watch that video and hear what the concerns were from your peers, so that you know how to address it when it comes up again, if it comes up again. Not to be heard from it, it's not directed at any of you specifically, it's not personal, does that make sense? It's coming from a place where someone's feeling like they're now, not having a safe voice. And so how do we make sure that we allow everyone to feel that belonging and that everyone's treated as they should be with respect? And improve our entire school community and culture. So I, I think we have stuff ready to go, and we have lots more work to do. We're nowhere near the end of the work that needs to be done throughout the whole district.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad you brought that up, because that, that's really my main concern with leaving the flag up for an extended period of time. I think it's a powerful, I'm looking, I'm looking at the second bullet in our belief statement, all, all of our students should feel valued and, and feel they belong. And I think this, this flag is a powerful symbol for some people in terms of feeling that they belong. And it's, we, what we heard in the spring is, I'm, I'm worried that there are students who feel like they don't belong when they see that symbol. I don't know that for sure, but that's the sense I got, that there were people that felt like, this is not for me.
And I, I think this is why you have such a, you've taken on such a, um, a huge and important responsibility. And I think it's, I think it's admirable, and it, as well as being, uh, a very difficult test of, um, you know, your, how big your hearts are, and, um, how much you can kind of embrace people who are maybe not really wanting to be embraced, but who need to be, um, in order for all of this to work for, for everyone.
So can we let Mia set her hand up for a while?
Yeah.
And then Mia, once you speak, I wanna add something to what Scott said.
Yeah.
I wanna, can you help Jody speak, like?
Thank you. Um, well, we heard a lot of these opinions, last year we had conversations with like structured, we built time, or it was callback, so the time was already built. We had specific conversations where people could come and they voiced their opinions, and we heard the opinions and the concern that you guys have been talking about right now. We already heard those and we want to hear them, and the whole purpose of those conversations was so that everybody heard everybody's opinions. And it's still what we're going to be working on, and we've been, I think our focus now is how we wanna continue that, because that's what the flag is, is bringing all of that. It's still gonna bring all that, and it's bringing everyone and everything, and not just some people's things.
So. Uh, uh, our country's been around for, you know, two hundred and some odd years, and we've been having these discussions, and we, they're still really difficult. So, I don't expect you to solve it. But just know, it's a huge, you're bitten off a big bite.
That's kinda where I was gonna go. Scott, I, I agree with it, applaud the students that are here tonight, but the educators hold more of that responsibility than you do. And I want you to hear that from me as the superintendent. I, the teachers in this building, myself, the administration, we hold as much, more of that responsibility than everybody feels belonged, and belonged. You can, the students can, can help it, can help it a ton, but the, um, it's not borne on the students in my mind, it's borne on us as the folks that, that help you. Everyone that works in this building.
And you've opened our eyes.
Yeah. So I, that's what I wanted to replace, I know what your intent was and from your heart, but at least it means out a little bit of, hey, students go do this. I don't believe the students are the lead in, they, they've helped us and they're showing us and they're brought out. But it's our responsibility as the educators, the adults in the building, to facilitate this conversation in a positive proactive way. Just as Jody said, what some of the plans have been for the beginning of school, which we've never, from what I know, have not ever done U thirty-two before.
And continue to support the things that you wanna try.
Yeah, and let you be leaders, I'm not saying for you not to be leaders. I just don't want you to feel like, hey, we're getting all this responsibility and what are the adults doing?
Are you guys ready to vote?
I'm, I'm gonna vote against and I just wanna explain that I, it's only because we don't have that, we haven't established that context. I would be in favor of putting it up for a shorter amount of time, I'd probably go more than two days, but but not having it be, be up indefinitely until we create this policy. The thing I like about it is it kind of lights a fire under us to get the policy done, I appreciate that part of it. But I'm just not comfortable with the, you know.
I heard Bill, I heard Bill say two months.
If we had a firm deadline, would you feel more comfortable with it?
Yeah, I mean, are, are you saying we don't, we are committing to getting a policy done in two months?
That's what I heard him say he wanted, I wrote it down here.
Can we do it? I mean, we haven't even looked at a.
I don't know.
Any, we haven't looked at a single one.
We can certainly give it our best.
So I'm not thinking about equity policy.
No, I know, we're talking about two different policies.
Black lives policy. Well, I just wanna be clear where I'm stating.
Yes, yes, and I understood that too, I totally understood that.
Well, well, I, I don't know what those look like either, but it seems like, that's a, that's a small policy compared to.
Yeah, no, he was, I was just talking about the flag flying policy.
Is there an amendment that would make it work for you, Kari?
I think shortening, shortening the amount of time is what, is what I'd be looking for.
So will you read the policy, I'm sorry, the um, the motion?
I'm applying it here, okay. I, I just have Carl, we can move to put the Black Lives Matter flag back up until a policy is written and passed.
What did she say, a flag policy?
Yeah.
We can add flag policy, yeah.
And what would that, just give me a sample or a flavor, what is a flag policy? Means we will put up other flags.
Dreaming out of the, out of the, and off the top of my head and some of the conversations I've had with a couple of superintents. It's something that the board will take petitions from students on raising flags that are aligned with the mission and goals of the school and or superintendent and or district.
And I also see the possibility of adding a second flag pole.
Yeah, yeah, that could be, that could be, that could be there too, but that you have to have a decision matrix that says, I mean, what you're doing is you're linking it to your, your goals and your mission that you've already adopted.
And will you put up more than one flag at a time?
Yeah, I mean, those get into procedures and we could get into that. I know that there's been some discussion about how long, what, and you know, what's the rubric or criteria, you know, what are the criteria to say it doesn't it doesn't bring harm to another group of students. I mean, and I don't know how you judge that, frankly, I mean, that's been some of the debate.
That's really helpful actually, that's, that seems doable.
That's, it's been the debate back and forth amongst the superintents, it's like, so you really wanna be the judge doing that? You know?
Yeah, that, that's actually, that seems much more feasible.
Were you thinking an equity policy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There's a flag pole policy.
Yeah, I was thinking there's a flag pole policy also.
There's a way to raise them and then there might even be a, a place of once they've been, I mean, one thing, and again, I'm, I'm talking, I'm brainstorming. So don't take this as, it has to be, it might be, you know, that after it's raised, it flies somewhere indoors or it doesn't do that or you know, you could, you could have, does it have a, is there a calendar, year rotation? I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of things you could play with that.
Yeah, and there are some examples we could look at?
No.
No, there's nothing.
Believe me, we searched last year, a long time, we put probably two or three people on the search.
Everybody I asked about flag pole stuff last year. Nationwide, you know, people I shot stuff out to, the best anybody got me was the American Legion, one page handout on the rules of how to handle, you know, don't let it touch the ground, keep it lit at night or take it.
Yeah, that's just what I can.
Just a simple campfire list of how to manage a flag.
Cutting new territory.
Okay, so I, I think now we're in a place I can support it, I, I would suggest that, I'm not part of the motion, but that we basically assign this to somebody to, to work between now and our meeting.
Yeah, and I would be willing to do that with, I would be willing to do it and then I'll pass it by whoever, you know, to at least take a first stab at it.
Potentially we could adopt something next time, it's possible.
Your policy allows you to do it when.
It does, yep.
And I mean, as we work on that Adrian, we can talk about it. And I think ultimately it's up to the policy center whether you want a single flag pole or a second flag pole, and we can figure that out as we go.
And that wouldn't be part of the policy?
No, but it would be, we'd know whether we're.
Yes, right, yep. Okay.
And board to make a decision.
Okay?
Yeah?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a work in progress, we love seeing you guys here.
I think you all applaud.
It's okay. Okay. Thank you very much, these are hard discussions.
Yeah, that was a great, great theory of a policy though, that was.
Yes, I tried to get it all down.
Still here, it's been here since, it's been here since.
Oh, it's on there.
It's on camera now too, so.
Okay, reports to the board, Kari wants to leave. Is it your daughter?
My wife.
Your wife's birthday today, is it a special birthday?
Hardly an excuse.
They're all special.
They're all special, I know, I don't know.
It's not a round, big round number.
It's not like a forty, fifty, you know. Sent, actually, we can do this really quickly, Central Mont Career Center.
Next meeting is September twenty-fifth.
Can you go?
I think I can.
You're gonna have to introduce yourself to them.
I was just looking at that.
Students, we have no students, so we'll go by that, administration.
Jody's gonna go first.
Alright.
Steven is, Steven is on his way to Michigan to take his daughter to college, he left this afternoon, so that's why he's not here.
That's my weekend plan. Do we have students lined up?
Yes, we do, yes.
Lucy and, we don't know the other one.
Yes, we do.
We don't.
I don't think it's public yet.
Okay, never mind then, go ahead Jody.
Lucy did an email and said she wasn't coming because she hadn't been in school yet, so.
There was nothing to report?
Totally ridiculous.
So I get to talk about some of the professional development that our teachers have been involved in over the summer. They had curriculum camp at the end of June, which was really exciting and we've been sharing out some of the stuff though, the good work that got done there. I was able to participate or, I shouldn't say participate, watch the World Peace Games take place at East Montclair. Several of our teachers took part in that masterclass with that and that was like the July twenty-third week.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna add, if you wanna go on YouTube and search for World Peace Game, watch it. It's gonna be a great addition to our middle school.
Yes, so our three social studies teachers in the middle school were part of that masterclass and one of our science teachers in the middle school. And they are going to run this twice with their seventh graders, some of whom are actually in the World Peace Game. And they're gonna use, they're gonna use some different scenarios, but they're gonna do a quarter two and then quarter four and see how students have improved on the transferable skills especially through that process and moving kids in their roles. So it was a really exciting thing, on, on the Wednesday when the kids first started playing the game. I was a little worried about them, but by Friday when they achieved world peace, it was really exciting, it was really fun.
In three days they did it?
They did, yes, they solved twenty-three different crises and, and.
I heard, I heard they were very, you were there for the first day, so I heard that they were it, it showed our educational system from what General Arison told me and they acted just, it showed the strengths of our system and it showed the flaws of our system. And it was fascinating, she said, and show something we've already known about our system. We're teaching too much technical and not enough holistic.
And the board is second in the world, Dave Bezos actually made it and the teacher who's been teaching this for forty years said it was one of the best boards he's ever seen. So Dave's gonna make us two more, cause we're gonna have all three course do this at once, which is gonna be exciting. I also took part in the project-based learning training that happened at the beginning of this month, the week after the board retreat. We had three days with the ninth and tenth grade teams, so the middle school took it in August of last year and now ninth and tenth grade teams and a couple of other teachers took that and they're excited about starting those projects. I helped train all of our new teachers in resorted practice, so they had their first two intro days, which was wonderful, it was a great, it's a great way to meet the new teachers, we have them for resorted practices on the Monday, Tuesday, then they had three days of new teacher training this year. So they were here all last week, getting to know each other and it was quite fascinating to see them. Yesterday when you were doing this presentation in the morning, all of our U three, two new teachers were sitting together.
That's right, they were, I noticed that.
Yes, it's quite a career and they, they've been great, so we have a good year ahead of us. We've had a great couple of days of in-service so far. We can't wait for the kids to come next week and I actually will be running a training for students who are on our student assorted panel on Tuesday, so they are tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders, so they'll be here on Monday for school and then they'll be here on Tuesday when they're not, not required. But they'll be here for a training and they will be joined by six, sixth graders who will also take part in the training, so that's really exciting. I think that's it.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great example of the leadership team, Jody said, hey, we could have some fifth or sixth graders and did you get someone from a rest school? I never, I wasn't on that list.
Calson Romney so far.
Yeah, so they really.
Yes, Calson Romney or no?
Yes.
Calson Romney or the student.
So far, I think they had to lead more from the other schools, it's just figuring out for the resorted practice and, and Jody's leadership on that is just tremendous for the whole supervisory and she's the person we go to. I know, cause I've turned to her a few times and I said, hey, I need your help. The other things I would add is yesterday we had Dave Melnick from Northeast, it's NFI, Northeast Family Something. And he's worked with us last January on students with childhood adverse effects, otherwise known as trauma. He worked all day yesterday, we had, last year you may recall from U thirty-two, we had approximately twelve between the two different somewhere like twelve fifteen, between the two different train, we had, it was after, they did some real intense training, they became our trainers. So Dave did a morning keynote and then, not just U thirty-two teachers, teachers from other buildings, we had a group of about twenty-five last year that were with Dave. That got some more in-depth training on, on trauma and adverse childhood effects. And they, they did breakout sessions on different things that you could do to help students that are feeling stressed and how do you work with that? And we wanna, we wanna say, for optimal learning, we don't, we don't want kids to have, we don't want kids in the area of no stress. Actually, learning doesn't really occur there, we want kids in mild to moderate stress, that's where learning occurs. So the stress can be good, it's when we get to the high levels of stress are toxic that we have issues. And so teachers got a lot, I think, of firsthand knowledge of how to use that training. As of this morning, we had, we, so we were doing around another cohort, twenty for folks to get some in-depth training and I think there were like thirty-seven or thirty-eight on the feedback from the day before. And said, hey, I wanna do more of this, we're actually gonna look and see if we can bring another cohort right to campus so they can, so they drive. As well as all the PD that Jody talked about, as you may remember, for our school, for emotional social learning, we also use responsive classroom at the elementary schools, so we had, I think, twelve. All but two of our new teachers in the elementary schools went through our week-long intensive for that. Jody, she told you about induction, we expanded that from two days to three days this year and they all, all the new teachers on Friday, when I saw them Friday morning, they were pretty full at that point, so it's a lot, but we're, we're doing a lot and so it's gonna require more and more training that we provide. And so it's just gonna be part of what we're gonna have to do. I would say that on the facilities front, everything's pretty well developed, you've seen Shapiro, if you didn't see it coming in, you've probably seen it this summer, it's really gone through a renovation. Windows have been redone, the roof is gonna be finished this weekend, we're promised. You'll see it's had water and ice on it, so it's been plenty sealed, but the shingles need to go on. And that's where the alternative program's gonna be housed out there, so to have kids out there permanently, we had to do some things to meet fire code. And so there's that, I know there's been some alarm work and I'm probably forgetting something else big in the building.
There's a whole list on page twelve.
Yeah, so.
Oh, Steven gave it to us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Of facility improvements, so.
Trail work, the trails are looking.
Yeah, the trails, they put down some drywall out there. And there's all, there's constant floor rotation throughout the building, as you said, Lori. There's, you know, the VTC is just at that place and the fire, they all rekeen under the living doors. I'm gonna talk about the track, let me talk a little bit about the elevator as well, that's something that will come to you, that's in the capital project, but there's an elevator that has some serious repair, that, some design work's being done right now to get our RFP out to be done this year.
Questions for them? Thank you. It's really nice to hear all the professional development.
Yes.
Yeah, and I didn't even count what's in his, he's got his teams working on specific courses this year this summer.
Answer that. Finance committee has not met.
So there is a summary, this is the final, right?
This is the final, the audit's finished last week, so this is the final.
And essentially what this is telling us is we did well on both ends, more revenue than expected and less expenses. So we, we ended up three hundred and a thousand change, about two percent, so it's really
Yeah.
Very nice, and so we have some excess fund balance, in excess of our four percent target to work with.
And I'll be talking in a bit under the action item that I reserved for some ideas that Steven and I had.
I'll take care of that list right there.
So I think in September we can.
And the, and the audit's happening.
The audit's done, the audit's finished, they're supposed to have preliminary drafts till Lori and I in a couple of weeks.
And food service?
It's doing well, better than it was.
Really?
Yeah, it's relative.
Okay, that didn't, it didn't look better to me, but.
I understand that.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Executive Committee.
Yeah, so we, our meeting last week, we, we talked a lot about the goals, the other thing I wanted to share with you was around Act forty-six timing, so we don't know what the board's gonna decide obviously, but we do know that if the decision is to merge governance, then we're gonna have to move quickly. And in that spirit, the executive committee talked about a couple of different things, well, first of all, they'll lay out a calendar with the various considerations of budgeting, just, we have to budget anyway, no matter what happens for next year, so we put that on and then we overlaid some of the, the timing of, of various Act forty-six, things that would have to happen. And from that, two things came up, first of all, we authorized Matthew, the chair of the committee to initiate some talks with a twin field chair to talk about a framework, how, how could we have more conversation, how could we explore potential? Since it's a, we're basically in a very unique situation right now and the sense is, well, we, we, we at least need to know what our options are. So Matthew's gonna be doing that over this next month and we'll hear from him. You'll likely get a report on that at the September full board meeting and there may be a, a recommendation from the executive committee about forming of exploratory committee in regards to twin field. The other thing was, we are likely going to form a committee in September to work on various governance issues, including You know, this is, i- i- in the scenario of, of, um, merged governance, um, articles of incorporation and specifically debt. So we are being asked to think about who we would like from this board to represent us on that committee, to be working on those topics. And do we have any priority topics that we would like that committee to start with?
And do you want an answer tonight to that? So who would wanna represent? Scott!
I'm gonna say George, or Jonathan.
Scott, you can, anybody else wanna do it? There's a man.
I'd be willing.
Oh, you had a big smile.
I care about governance very much. I'd be willing to, but.
And this is more than governance, though?
No, it's governing and debt.
A little bit. Stephen Look and Chris McFay have said they're gonna put together a proposal to bring back to the executive committee. And I don't think it's one person. I think there'll be probably more than one person to quickly. Because when the seven oh six B committees were working, there was lots of work done by no resolution on where to go with the different articles of agreement.
Right.
So they're thinking that there were even multiple committees working on separate, different articles to come to a proposed resolution for forced merger comes. Because there is ninety days from whence the decision comes. And there are proposed articles that will come from the separate, from the state board for us to use. Unless ours are adopted by the state board within those ninety days.
Adopted by the state board?
They have to approve them.
So you get less than ninety days to agree.
They have to approve, so we have ninety days.
So you wanna have them ready before, and if you don't need them, you don't need them.
And that was the talk of that executive meeting. So Rick was great about saying, I think we should start having these discussions just in case. So we're not, so we can determine versus have to accept it.
And I, I'm, I have language on debt anyway. So that would be.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah. How would a lawsuit affect this? Like if certain individuals filed a lawsuit to prevent the merger? If there's a forced merger?
I would say that the biggest, the best authority on that is our attorney. From what I know of the law, so I'm not gonna say I'm an expert on this. I haven't gotten asked that question. But the way that laws that we deal with for students, with what is in law, we follow that until the suit overturns it.
Okay.
Unless you instruct us otherwise.
Okay.
So you got Scott as point person?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not even actually nailing it down now. It'll, it'll happen. I think it's a September meeting. Everyone's starting thinking about it. And, um, the only other thing is, I'm sure this will come up during negotiations, but it was kind of a surprise to me is that, um, they're, they're gonna start working on health insurance, negotiating health insurance in the next month, next couple of weeks?
Our agreement with the association says it will start before September fifteenth.
And that's just the appetizer. They're negotiating both contract, full contracts this year.
And state law that was passed in Act eleven. So it was either eleven or eighteen, I'm sorry. It was House Bill eleven, Act eighteen. States that all contracts must sunset and stop on July one, two thousand twenty. So this is a one-year contract.
So, cause intense as the past couple of years have been?
This will be more intense than any other year. So in doing things, I said to the executive committee, in September, I'll be looking for priorities because you have more work for just the board members. And I can tell you, we cannot stack it.
Why will this be more intense, this year's negotiations?
Um, not just in negotiations, the work that we have to do with forty-six, either way.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the negotiations.
All the work.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. Okay, got it. Yep. That I understand.
So, um, if it's okay with you, I'll just get out.
Yep, that is fine. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask one thing? Um, I prefer not to film this. Is it, is it available in PDF form?
I wish, you could give that, you back, back to a, to your policy committee member to give that back to the board member that pointed out that I must do that each year for you.
Okay, but if I leave it here?
Does policy in here says you have to give us this? I'm sorry, that just makes me laugh. I'll get working on that one right away.
Thanks, though.
He'll take the other thing.
Would you like to hire someone?
Sticker?
Sticker, yeah.
Take a sticker. What did we do to deserve stickers tonight?
Say that to that individual, please.
They're going out to all the seventh grade parents and Phil saw them and said, hey.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? Policy committee. Scott is, I'm sorry, Jonathan is not here. I am going to attend those meetings from now on. And if he's there too, that'd be great. But U thirty-two is not being represented. And I feel like it needs to be represented. So I'm gonna get myself on that list and just go. Do you have anything to add about policy? We, there was a report in here about a bunch of different things.
I think all in all, there's a willingness to move fast to merge.
Policies.
Across the issue. I will say that's not universal.
But all in all?
But I think that voice needs to come up.
Okay. Well, I think U thirty-two has a powerful voice in that.
And I think we need to, we need to move many of these policies into procedures. Jody and I talked about that many times. There are many of these that need to be rescinded and just go into procedures.
And are they, we just have to do that as U thirty-two board, right?
Yep, for the, uh, for the ones that are just U thirty, I mean, we have it now. We know what this cross, what it is, even from all the work that it's done so far.
So is that something that'll like come to us at the next meeting? Is it, you, you've analyzed this and you propose that these policies be rescinded? Or do you need us to correct them?
So this is a piece that I have never really been sure on because of the way, if this board instructed me to do it, I would do it gladly. But I really, I think intuition or, because it's never been directly said to me, but it's been implied that the board does that work.
Not by me?
So I'm gonna put that as a discussion item in our next, at our next board meeting.
Yeah.
And maybe an action item also.
Yep.
To do that, so that we have that discussion and then we make a decision to move forward.
So I guess if you need a motion, I would move that Bill come back to us with the list of what policies they have analyzed. I think should be rescinded and become procedural, so that we can help with that decision.
Decide whether you wanna do it.
Rather than us go through and analyze and make a proposal, if they've already done that, we take.
We haven't done it yet.
So I suggest we wait and have a discussion with everybody about whether that's the way we wanna move forward on September twenty-sixth or whatever it is, and then vote on September twenty-sixth. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, but would that be, would we have, we would just be blankety giving the authority to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that.
One thing I like as your superintendent is when, I actually like it when the board directs me. I think when things are implied or, you know, hold for, and one person asks me to do it.
Well, it's nice for us to know when you need the authority and.
I don't need the authority, but to say, Bill, we would like you to go through and tell us. Give us a recommendation of what you think should be here and what it shouldn't be.
Okay. Is that okay, Karen, to wait?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Um, school start time committee. Have you met this summer?
No, you have the minutes from the hot topic forum in there. And I, if it's a very best in my email from Krista, we are trying to meet next week on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, yes.
Wednesday.
I don't know. She may have put it in my schedule. I've been, I mean, Karen knows I've tried to contact her.
Yeah.
I haven't do it, been doing my part of the phone tag work. And Scott's heard this from me, but Karen, you know, just said this is one of those priority items that.
Yeah.
There's a heavy lift, so I'm not sure in everything we need to do.
School quality committee is meeting in September. And negotiations committee? Hasn't met.
No.
It's Carl, right? Are you still our negotiator?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's, Carl, you don't need to be at this next, the meeting I'm about to say, but there's a meeting of the presidents and Susanna and Char, Johnny. Just to start to set, like, what's the schedule on September eleventh?
How it's gonna work.
Yeah. So we're just getting preliminary to get everyone before we bring all the negotiation teams together.
Yeah.
Action agenda. We've approved the board goals. Accept the letter of resignation from the school nurse. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
Second.
What's her name?
Lisa Rice.
Oh, Lisa Rice, sorry. I was thinking of the one. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approve the hire of the new school nurse. That's Mary Ann somebody, right?
Yes.
Crossman. Crossman. A motion to accept her nomination?
Selman.
Carl, a second?
Second.
Scott, any discussion on that?
She comes to us with many years of experience from Hartford.
It's amazing. You found someone.
We, Mary likes to find someone with experience, this experience she has. So we're a good fortune.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Approve the hire of the alternative resource teacher, Katie's.
Stanley.
Stanley?
Staley.
Staley. There's no N in that. A motion to approve her hire?
Selman.
Karen, a second?
Second.
Carl, any discussion about her? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. A motion to approve the hire of Jessica Walker as a guidance counselor, school counselor?
Selman.
Karen, a second? Are you keeping up over there, Lisa?
Yes.
Second.
Carl, any discussion on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May I just ask you a question?
Yes, you certainly may.
What, I, I know she's replacing Scott Harris, but she's not actually, excuse me, not actually doing what Scott did?
No, she's, she'll be in the middle slot.
Okay, great.
How did you know that?
Pardon me?
How did you know that?
Because Scott Harris was my kid's counselor.
Oh, and he doesn't get her?
Right, that's my understanding.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and Jade did, I should've said something about, uh, Katie as well, but Jade comes to us. She was here as a attorney and has done lots of work with Vermont's equity. And restored practices, so she's a wealthy resource for us.
Great. You guys always hire really amazing people.
We try. We try. We're doing good things here.
A motion to authorize the superintendent to, sorry, to sign the Cross Vermont Trail Association agreement to grant public asset access and trail easement. And we, these guys came and spoke to us.
Right, so let me just explain a little bit for that.
Let me get a motion first.
Okay.
And a second? Scott and Carl, okay, bye.
So you had a discussion, but you didn't have any motion for me to authorize. I have the legal papers on my desk. Uh, we, it took us a little while with the attorneys to get everything right. We went back and forth for a little while. But, um, they're all ready to go. Our attorneys reviewed it and said.
Yeah, great.
They're so protective.
So exciting, too.
All right, I'm all for it. I just wanted to make sure that you authorize. I try to have the boards always authorize if I'm doing something like that.
Appreciate that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Have the board of orders made it go out?
Yep.
All right.
A motion to authorize the superintendent to award the RFP for, um, a civil engineer to look at.
To redesign.
Redesign the track.
And to start a big process. If you wanna get a motion, then I'll explain it a little bit.
Did you get all that?
To authorize a request for proposals.
For authorize the superintendent for the, a request for proposals to get a civil engineer to redesign, begin the redesign process of the track. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Motion?
Want to move it?
A second? Scott and Karen?
So as you know, we've been dealing the past few years, frankly, as long as I've been here, since this is year seven. Uh, we resurfaced the track and then learned quickly that it wasn't the resurfacing of the track that was needed, but that actually the subsurface of the track down three feet needs to all be replaced. With the good management that you have lead for us in our capital project, we have the funds to do this ourselves, to not go out to bond. We don't know exactly what it costs. We have estimates anywhere from seven hundred thousand to over a million dollars. If it's over a million dollars, we'll be waiting a year or two. But part of this, what you're voting on tonight to authorize me to send, is we sent out an RFP to, with the help of Black River Design, who helps us with all our facility work. They said you don't need an architect. You need a, it'll be cheaper if you have a civil engineer and an air firm that's done track and has done all this work. So we put out an RFP that came back a couple of days ago. And they're gonna look at it tomorrow with John Hemelgard helping us to see who has the best proposal to do the design work. And then go to a cost estimator. So we come back to you and talk to you about money management. And the options if you go with a six hundred fifty thousand dollar or a million dollar option. So it's like anything, you get what you pay for, you know? But we've gotta go down three feet underneath that track, because it's, the core samples are very clear that the gravel's no longer gravel. And that's why we're being the frost eating out there that's, that's impacting the track life. And when cross-country and, and track, cross-country running track combined have the highest numbers for any sports. That's our facility that, that needs some attention. So we're not sure that it's going to be next academic year until we get those cost estimates. But we need to, um, have this firm help us do the design. The design will last. And then to go have it run through a cost estimator to get, you know, what are the options?
Don't have to implement the design immediately.
If we say we need to still have a design in hand, yeah. But the capital, the good management that you've helped us establish as a board for the capital, uh, planning budget is, you know, is what we're, we're going to. So we're not going to a bond for this. And that's what the voters have told us is, no, no more bonds. We're gonna sell.
How many proposals? Do you know how many proposals?
I know there's at least three in. It was publicly advertised and went out to firms who we knew that did it as well. So we're fine that way. Black River Design, I just asked them to do the whole thing. It was easier than trying to do it in-house. We said, I said, John, can you take one of your project, your project people and have them put together what we're looking for? And they're gonna start evaluating tomorrow and probably have that done by next week. So you can, um, if you feel comfortable with authorizing myself, I said to Adrian as a backup, if the board wanted to go where the board was prior to this, my next recommendation would be to have the finance committee come to go at once. They did. But Bill Ford, who's been our clerk, who worked for, last year for the, uh, bleachers and the lockers. And Bill's done everything we've done with the other elementary schools as, as part of the team. John Hemelgard lead partner at Black River Design, and then Amy Molina and Dave Hannigan. And they know they have names, they need me from what we've done at the elementary schools. So I think we have a good team to look at the qualifications and give recommendations.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. A motion to approve the board of orders?
Selman.
Karen, a second? Carl, were there any questions on them?
Lisa, I forgot to give these to you, like, for numbers.
Oh, there are a bunch of numbers. Do you just want me to hand them to you? It's not, it's careful order.
A bunch of big numbers.
A bunch of big numbers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Future agenda items? I think we got a few. Little diversity, little fight policy. Board communication. I will write a front porch forum. Unless someone else really wants to.
I think Jonathan wants to. Come on, Merlin. Come on, Merlin.
We're missing over there. Okay. And anything else?
Can I just say, I'm your board member.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I just wanted to say something else.
Well, I, just on, i- if you want to get a really good feel for the state of play with the state board of education at the present or at the present moment, at least as of a week ago, um, you have to read David's article, um, from, I guess, last Thursday was when it.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that was actually quite good. And the other thing is look at the last seven, or the last few minutes on retn.org of, um, the state, this like triple marathon state board meeting. They have it indexed by chat. by chap, sort of segmented by chapters, it's the very last chapter, and it's really fascinating, but this is what David was writing about.
Did you stay for that conversation?
No, but I will, I will never bail out of the state board meeting early again, it was.
Did you stay for the whole thing?
Yeah. And it, it's, it's fascinating to see.
I have to say, I was really surprised reading your article, it was not what I expected to read.
It was not what I expected.
Yeah, maybe we misjudged, who knows?
Who knows, I think you're so.
Yeah, who knows?
People ask me all the time what I think, and I might even really guess.
Yeah, yep, it's just, yeah, when it happens, it will happen.
All right, so I want to compliment our principal, although he's not here, Ian Jen Miller-Arsno wrote many of this new publication that just came out today on explaining proficiency-based learning, which we're going to be giving to all the parents and our staff, we have lots of these, it's a pre-k graduation look at it, a lot of it is U thirty-two, but we want, you know, in our, I'm going to say mine, actually, because I'm the one who listens to this a lot, is that we look at things in a pre-k graduation continuum. So this explains proficiency-based learning, and that's really trying to help everyone be able to have the conversation. So they did an awesome job on this, and it literally came in the press today.
Hot off the press.
And that, Adrian reminded me, and so if you, if you already have one and want to leave it here, it's fine, I grabbed these off the office shelf, I had the implementation plan report, I think that was given out at the retreat.
Yeah, so you might not have it.
That did not happen.
Yeah.
So that's a great look, and we're going to do that, that's the change, we used to